Have respect for everybody's time, including, you know, and especially the public. So I'd like to start this special meeting of the Atherton County Council. The August 7th special meeting at 6:00 PM to discuss the two ballot measures that were tabled at our most previous meeting. We want to start with the pledge to the flag, which I was told I can add to the agenda by the city manager, and I think is appropriate, especially during these Olympic times. "A blood allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. So, the first item on the agenda is public comments now. Excuse me? Oh, yes, all right, go, Paul.
Councilmember Carlson?
Here.
Councilmember Dobie?
Coming.
Councilmember McKippen?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Whitmer?
Here. Okay, now we're on to public comments. So, this is for items that are specifically on the agenda. There are two. One is the resolution calling for a ballot measure regarding building a, some permanent structures in the park for, with Menlo-Atherton Little League. And the second ballot measure is regarding new ti- issues surrounding potentially Newtown Center, which are both in the back. So if you would like to make a comment on either of these two items, you're welcome to. This early public comment section is reserved for people who won't be around to, or can't stay around for the whole meeting, and they want to make a specific comment about one of these two, we take them now. After we debate each one of these items, we will open the floor for public comments for each specific item. But if you speak now, then that's your speak, okay? So, are there any public comments at this time regarding all two of them, or either one or the other that somebody wants to make now so they don't have to stay for the whole meeting? Please step forward and say your name and address if you would please, and the comments are limited to three minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Haven. I'm here on behalf of the Menlo-Atherton Little League. We're pleased to let the voters decide whether the project we've submitted should be approved. After all, we feel that this is a gift to the entire community, not just a subset of the community, and the town should be entitled to accept or reject it. That said, we believe that the measure must be correctly described on the ballot, and while the plan has been made public, and the details are and will remain available for everyone to review, the ballot language should generally reflect the purpose and scope of the plan. The plan is not limited to bleachers. It is more than that. The project is not intended to benefit Little League alone. It goes beyond that. This is about enhancing the field and surrounding area for everyone to enjoy. It is about aesthetics as well as athletics. It is about safety for the people that play on the field. The ballot language should encompass all of this, and in an accurate and succinct fashion. To that end, we believe that the appropriate question for the voters is, for the record, "Should the town permit the Menlo-Atherton Little League to enhance and beautify the baseball field and surrounding areas at Holbrook Palmer Park, including safe covered seating for spectators, a safer playing area for children, and new restrooms for all park users?" Thank you.
Okay, are there any other public comments at this time? Okay, sorry.
My name is Ann McNurty. I live at Warren Wilkins. This is an item on the agenda. A couple of weeks-
No, no, we're only going to speak, this is a special meeting, and we may only speak about items that are on the agenda, which is the Little League ballot measure and the Newtown Center ballot measure.
Oh, okay, well then I'm not going to say this, and I'll just say about the Little League structure-
Restart, restart your time, please.
Okay, the Little League structure-
What, yeah, hang on just a sec. She wasn't in the room when you made your explanation. She probably should be told, if you speak now, you can't talk later on, you get one shot.
On each particular item? Oh, that's right, thank you, Mr. Connors, I'll come back on the item.
Okay, all right. Any other special, or any other one-time public comments at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comments, and we will move to the first item on the regular agenda, which is the resolution of the city council, the town of Atherton, California, ordering the submission of qualified electors of the town of Atherton, a measure relating to the Menlo-Atherton Little League proposal for Holbrook Palmer Park. Bill, I assume you're going to describe this?
It's just a continuation from the July 25th meeting. It was continued to allow the council members to review the proposed plans and get more information from the planning department, which I believe a few of you have done with that.
And to be fair, with respect to the comment from the public we've already had, we realize that there's lots more to the proposal. The problem is, it has not gone through appropriate review at any level before, and that plan has not been submitted to the city council. And because of that, staff was sort of shooting in the dark and looking for issues. We certainly don't disagree that there's much more to it. The problem is, because it hasn't been vetted through the normal development process, or even to the recreational process, it's almost as if, you know, we usually don't do planning by voters. It's, can be done, but usually you have a plan that is, we're sure is within the parameters of the city's codes and all, that have been through the appropriate divisions before it goes to the, to the electorate. So we had a little trouble coming up with language, and we certainly are open to suggestions from the public and from the council as well, to go forward.
Could I ask you a question?
Certainly.
If that, if that is what the Little League want, is there any reason that couldn't be used?
Yes, actually, that language would run afoul of a recent appellate court case. It says you can't use words like "beautify" and "safety" because those are subjective words. And, but could we come up with a full definition of what they have proposed? The problem is, is if the voters approve it, and it's not, for instance, if it violates some other city code, now we have a real issue because it's not legal to go forward. So, it would be, it's something we haven't had a chance to look at, and, for instance, if, if this were a citizen-proposed initiative, the city council has a right to send it out to staff for analysis. That would probably be a very good idea, because I, I can't tell you that, that the project as submitted is without any issues or problems. And, and I don't mean issues or problems that voters could vote on, I mean issues or problems with the general plan or the park's master plan, things like that, that would require changes that you cannot just then submit to the voters, unless you're asking them to change the general plan, and that's not what we have before us. We, it's not that far down the road yet.
But they could, if it, let's say the planning commission said, "Oh, we can't have this, you can't have that," and they could appeal it to the city council to override, is that not correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If you were to take out the, the language of the subjective language, could you add some of the other issues that they have asked for, such as the restrooms for park users? That's certainly hard to explain with that stadium.
We certainly could use words like, "Should the town permit the Menlo-Atherton Little League to improve the baseball field-"
Right.
"-and surrounding areas, including covered seating for spectators, improved playing areas for children, and new restrooms." Those are, those are so-called neutral words that would be acceptable if, if the council wanted to do something like that. We, we just didn't know what you were shooting for, or what goals were to be met by giving it to the voters, or what you're asking. Some of the, like, the library is a good example of something where we're pretty sure we have the target goal for the voters to decide. Here, it was a little bit more hard to pick out.
Who, who came up with this language?
The general board here.
You?
You didn't get to hear him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, he did. He's with the, the little.
His comment, Jim, was that, that they actually think it's a good idea, or they have no problem with the public voting, because after all, it's the public's park. But they, they wanted to enhance the, the language in the ballot measure to make it clearer on what they were trying to accomplish with this project. And what we have a fair, fair language that's being proposed by the staff. That's what Bill put together, yeah.
No, actually, this, this language that we just passed out was quite-
No, he understands that, yeah. Yeah. And what I said is if, could we, could we neutralize this language by, to make it legal, but include the same concepts in the ballot? And Bill said, yes.
Could we do it?
If you wanted to make a comment, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think that the city attorney really hit upon the dilemma that staff had, he had, in coming up with ballot language, because the project has not really gone through the process that we have in Atherton for building projects, development projects, to go through, which is to go through the planning commission, to be vetted, to have the planning commissioners review it, make their recommendations to the council, let the council then take a look at it, and, and work it through the process. So, we're not there yet. To have the ballot measure come up at this time was surprising to me, because it had not gone through the process. Now, I'm happy that the Little League representatives feel that it should go to the vote of the people, and I think as most, all large projects having to do with the park have gone to the vote of the people, as to whether or not they wanted a bonsai garden, or a swimming pool, you know, over the years. So, this would be something that could go before the, the public in a ballot measure. I think that, given the process that has not been completed with the planning commissioners or the revisions that maybe the Little League are making to their plans, working with the commissioners and coming up with something that would be acceptable to the commissioners for recommendation to council, I think they're a little ahead of the game. But, we do have a election coming up in November, so maybe we do. It's my understanding that there would be an impartial analysis written by the city attorney for any ballot measure, up to 500 words, right?
That's correct.
And then there is an argument for, and an argument against, and then there could be rebuttals, and we're not doing the rebuttals. Okay.
You sure?
You guys noted at the last meeting not to accept rebuttals.
Okay. And there doesn't have to be an argument to guess, unless someone, if someone doesn't write it, there could just be an argument for, right?
So, Mr. Mayor?
And, and, just one second, and the argument for could have the words like "beautify,"
Absolutely.
"enhance," all the other positive things that the proponents of the Little League in the park, and the funding, the finance, the funding as part of the Little League Association. So, I guess another question that I have about the ballot measure, language, would it need to describe any fiscal impacts?
Actually, strangely enough-
I asked that question last time.
Local ballot measures do not require a fiscal analysis. County, yes. State, yes. Local, no. However, it doesn't preclude you from requesting or requiring one at this level, it's just, from what I can find, it's not required.
And it, it says here, "Permit Menlo-Atherton Little League to do this," so I would, I realize maybe I'm unusual, but I would assume that that meant the town wasn't paying for it.
Yeah. Can I, are we done, was it finished? Well, I certainly understand some of the things that Councilmember Lewis has said, but, you know, one of the positives here is we do have an election coming up, which I'm sure everybody's aware of. And I like ballot measures to go to that kind of an election, because we get a much bigger turnout of voters in those kind of elections, and we do have a special election, and therefore, we get a much more representative result, in my belief. And therefore, even though we may not be ready, I mean, the language here that is in the resolution seems to me to be reasonably acceptable. And I would say that, you know, rather than wait till next year for our general election, it may be that the Little League would like to have it on this ballot, because it is an elec-, it is an election that would get a very good, well, I wouldn't say very good, but certainly would get a bigger turnout of people than we would in any kind of special election. Where I believe, in special elections, you know, you get extremes on both sides voting, and not too many other people, so that would be my opinion.
Any other council comments? Go ahead.
I think that it would be wiser in this instance, given the fact that we did struggle with what the language should be, given the fact that this is something that has not been gone through the process, and, and I think it's an opportunity not to have to go through the process, which could be a long, grueling, unpleasant one, as we've already witnessed with one of our potential projects. When I went to the planning commission and I heard the words "EIR" spoken with regard to this project, I don't think we want even the possibility of an EIR with its attendant costs with something like this. So, I think it would be wise to utilize, to the extent possible, on the subject to our attorney's revisions, the language that the Little League has submitted. They know what the project encompasses, and it's an opportunity to find out how the people of the town feel. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. It's, as our interim city manager has indicated, it's almost at no cost, and it gives the Little League an opportunity to find out, you know, does its project go or not.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Could I suggest a potential revision to what they've submitted?
Sure.
For your, for your review? It might read, "Should the town permit the Menlo-Atherton Little League to improve the baseball field and surrounding areas at Holbrook Palmer Park, including covered seating for spectators, an improved playing area for children, and new restrooms for all park users, using private funds only?"
That sounds pretty good. I would think that also the, when you say "covered seating for spectators," I think they're going to be covered seating for, they're going to put a cover, or a roof on the, on the dugouts, is that correct?
That's correct.
Which actually makes sense, in case it's raining, the kids sit there. So I'd say, "and players."
That's correct.
Oh, can we take the word "safe" out of this?
Yeah.
Yeah, you did.
I did.
You could, you know, that's-
I took "safe," "beauty," "safer."
I think that's, that's fair. So is the representative from the Menlo-Atherton Little League okay with those wording?
Absolutely. Yeah, we'd be pleased with that wording.
It's using private funds only.
That is absolutely true.
Okay. So let's have some public comments then on this? If they would like, anybody would like to make a public comment on the Little League petition only?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Lee Price. I'm a master municipal clerk and special advisor with Management Partners, under contract with your city manager to assist her during this period in which you're holding candidate elections and ballot measure elections as well. My apologies to our city attorney, but we didn't have a chance to talk this week about something we had a quick conversation about in the parking lot last week. Well, what I was wanting, wanting to bring to your attention is, under California election law, the city council may put forward a ballot measure that is labeled advisory vote only. And the purpose for doing that is to get general voter opinion regarding the ballot measure. But what it doesn't do is obligate the city council in any way. So I just wanted to throw that out as something else to consider, in this case, if you were to go along this path. The ballot label would begin advisory vote only, and then ask voters the question, of course, adds only three more letters, and at this point, I think you're at 44 words, if I'm not mistaken. Just a suggestion.
Any other public comments? Ann?
My name is Ann McNurty, and I, I may have a question for our master clerk here. I'm, the reason that it's called advisory vote only is because it hasn't gone through the process that it should go through, or what's the rationale for that? Do you know?
Well, do you want to ask, make any other comments?
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, then I'll just make another, other comments, and then she, you, you can go back to that question. Just essentially that I think having this on the ballot and the other issue on the ballot about a town center, which is really just totally amorphous and ambiguous, is, is diluting the real issue of this particular election, which is the objection that many Athertonians have as to the slanted process that many feel the library project in the park has been put forward. And it's, it's awful to see the same thing happening again with the Little League. And I'm happy to know that the manager of the Little League is in favor of a vote, and I'm sure he's also in favor of something being fully vetted, which is something that people are angry about, the slanted sort of review that it got, the library project got. So I would say, I would not have this on the ballot. I'm delighted that it says advisory vote only, because it certainly hasn't gone through the process, and it seems to be doing the same kind of bum's rush that we've seen with a library project, which is, a building appears, and it's this huge building that seems, that's going to destroy another building there, the main building, take some of the parking lot, and also reduce an income stream for the city that was profitable if the, if it had been allowed to operate as the people operated it planned.
You want to stay on the Little League?
Well, we're, we, this is related to the Little League in that-
We talked about-
In that, the, the, the library started with a picture of a complete building, and the Little League proposal has started with a, a complete ballpark, and it hasn't been vetted, and I don't think you can build anything in California without an EIR. So I think you're not going to be able to escape some decency in the process of constructing bleachers for the Little League, because it's not just bleachers, it's a ballpark. And that may not be the intention of the original granters of the, of the land to the city of Atherton. But, anyway, I just think it needs to be vetted, and it dilutes the real issue, which is the library. Thanks.
Bill, did you want to comment on the advisory, or what it can be for you to give your explanation?
Yeah, actually, we had included the, the word advisory or not advisory as an option in the next item, but it could also apply to this one. It's totally up to the council. Ballot measures don't have to be mandatory, and you don't have to bind the city council. Sometimes councils just want to test the waters and find out the top things. So it certainly is up to you. The staff hasn't recommended that this one be advisory or not advisory, it's really up to the council.
But it has nothing to do with the status of the advisory, if I understand the explanation that we've had earlier from you, was that the council is not bound by staying with what that, the vote outcome is, where people could say, "We don't want a, a Little League in the park," and then the county council could say, "Well, too bad, it was advisory." Where if it's binding, then it has, has nothing to do with the status of its planning.
That's correct. And it also carries forward into the future, if the voters say, "No, Little League in the park, period," and it's, and it's binding, then the only way to set that aside in the future is by another vote.
Right. So this doesn't say, "No, Little League," it says, "Should they enhance?"
That's correct.
So, Little League would still be able to use the field, and would make minor, but not be able to build, for example, a 200-seat stadium-
I apologize for using an example that wasn't one in front of us at the time.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
So, I, what I'm hearing is, if we make it advisory, and assuming everyone says, "Yes," votes "yes" on it, it would not bind the council to approve that?
That's true.
But if everyone said, "No," and it's advisory, it still doesn't bind the council, and the council could effectively overrule the vote of the people.
Yes, that's true.
So why would it-
And so why-
It makes no sense. I agree.
Sorry. Cut off.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm having a hard time with that, actually.
I think we all would, to go to that effort and then basically be able to ignore it.
Because it is kind of a, I think that the Little League feels pretty strongly that they can launch and run a campaign in support of this.
Absolutely.
Is that-
That's what we intend to do.
Right. Because putting something on the ballot is not just a whim. I mean, and we shouldn't take it as a whim, you know, that we're just going to put something on the ballot just because it's a general election, and, you know, we've got something to do. I mean, it's, it's serious. And we've got to launch a campaign, we've got to do this, and so you feel pretty strongly that you've got the support to have this pass. And I think if you're going to go to that effort, and the people vote, "Yes, let's do it," I think council should support that, and be valed for that.
I think we're in agreement.
So we're not going to make it advisory, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I think we probably need to hear from, and then close the public hearing, and then you guys can decide up here which one we do.
Any other public comments?
Mayor, good afternoon, council members. My name is Farzad Najat. I'm a resident of Axon Road. I, I came here with the library issue, and I'm sort of in this ballpark thing, Little League is kind of new, but I'm a little bit disappointed that you guys would push the decision to the voters, because this is sort of a small issue in the grand scheme of things, especially with all the big issues that's in the election. And the library project is something that's very important to me personally, but the Little League, I think this is something that you should handle, people. And what you're going to have here is a special interest that's essentially been given a free park, and it's a great deal for them to say, "Hey, we'll pay for it, but look, you're taking a public park and you're-" you're taking a public park and you're pushing bleachers in here and all this kind of stuff. And, you know, I have, I have young kids, but they don't play softball. I'm not a big fan of softball. We take our dogs out, we do other stuff. And I'm afraid that, you know, just sort of standing here and watching the concept, what's going to happen is, you're going to have a very motivated special interest that's sort of going to dominate this. And, you know, you look kind of bad standing up and saying, I'm not for a Little League development in a park, it just doesn't seem like a popular stance to have out in the town. So this, in a way, is you're letting, you're allowing it to be built and not taking any responsibility by saying, let the voters decide, because they're going to really push for it, and no one's going to come out against it, and it's going to quietly pass, and now you're going to feel like you have a mandate and say, hey, the people want it. Well, I'm not sure if it's going to come out that kosher, you know? And so I believe you should sort of protect my public parks, don't let anyone develop them for their own special interest. And when you don't, when you do that, you leave it open for the future. You don't lock down a corner of the park and say, well, this is Little League for generations on it, because, you know, where I'm from, we don't play Little League, my kids don't. So, and that's pretty much, I know I've got more time, but I'm looking for it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing then, I will close the public comments, and we will come back to the council. So we've had some discussion on advisory versus not advisory. Residents brought up the fact that you're not interested necessarily in cutting the park up and letting it go to a vote. What do we want to talk about? Any other questions we'd like to have?
You know, I think I'm halfway there in both directions, but after this lady spoke, I really think that I would prefer it to be advisory. That's my view.
Any other comments from the council? Jerry, sorry.
I'm very uncomfortable in having anything on the ballot pertaining to Little League at this point in time. And my discomfort is the fact that we are short-circuiting our government process and I think undermining the rule of the planning commission. Why are we doing this? Is it because we do not trust the process, which includes public input about the entire plan when it's presented to the planning commission? Is it because we don't trust the competence and integrity of the five commissioners that have been appointed by the council to manage this type of process? We want to only leave those issues of airways trees and zoning setbacks and things like that to the planning commission to deal with? I don't hear residents clamoring to vote on this matter at this point in time. And even with the language, the change in language, I'm not sure as to what the residents would really be voting on. Certainly, the entire Little League proposal is much broader than what can be encompassed in a 40-word ballot measure. I think that there are a number, even if we were to pass, I believe the planning commission will still have to deal with the plan because there are many issues still to be, I think, or questions are going to be raised, either the planning commission or the council's going to be challenged about some of the details, I think, that are in the proposal. These details and the entire plan, I think, needs to be put before the public. There needs to be a hearing, the public members can come and comment upon the various details. I think the planning commission is the right place to set limits and try to come to some sort of compromise with the Little League folks that there are issues that need to be resolved, and rather than carving out just one or two, three different pieces of the entire plan. I think this is a cop-out, in a sense, of trying to finesse a measure, of trying to finesse an issue that hopefully will go away and the council won't have to deal with it in the future. And I don't think this is right. We are circumventing and undermining our hometown government process, which I think sets a bad precedent and which will make a good campaign issue for some candidate. So I plan on voting no on any, any measure right now for Little League.
Go ahead.
Actually, I think Jerry had some very important points to make in what he said. And, and I think they are these. I think it's important not to circumvent the, either the planning commission process or the council process, and I don't think this does that. I think what this does is get a general sense, which people said they never got with regard to the library, of how the voters feel regarding a Little League and this kind of ball field and these improvements in the park. But when it comes down to, what are we talking about when we say an improved playing field? Is that net going to be out there and just taken down once a week? What are these public rooms, restrooms going to look like? Who's going to maintain them? You know, how large are they going to be? How many spectator seats? What's the covering going to look like? What is the spectator area going to look like? Again, how big is it going to be? Is it going to be 200, 100? Where exactly is it going to be located? All of that is going to take a while and a process, both before the planning commission, this council, and the public, in order to determine when and how it goes forward. All this will do, will give them and us a sense of, does the public want this in Holbrook Palmer Park? Which, as I say, and I'll repeat again, people said they never knew with regard to the library, and that's why that, this vote is going forward. So it's starting from the other end. Do they want it? And then all of the very many, many details with regard to it will have to go before the planning commission and this council and the broader public to be worked on. But there's still quite, and you yourself said it, there's still a lot of process to be determined once that is decided, which is why I don't think it need be an advisory vote, because I think there's still a lot that will have to be decided by these two bodies and the public after that vote is determined. And I think it's important for us to report with what they have asked us to do, and then let the public process take place, and if there will be considerable public process that will ensue.
So my feeling from the first time this ballot measure proposal came before in June was, where did this come from?